I call to order tonight's meeting Dixon Board of Education, Dixon Unit School District 170, Wednesday, May 21st, 2025, for a regular meeting. Role call.
Mr. Fritz?
Here.
Mrs. Gates?
Here.
Mrs. LaVon Park?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mrs. Shaver?
Here.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Weiger?
Here. We thought maybe the retirees that are here tonight could lead us in the pledge, Mr. Empen and Mrs. Frye.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The consent agenda consists of the following items: regular and special meeting minutes, DPS and LCSEA treasures report and monthly bills, the balance sheet and monthly expense report, discipline report, staff development report, monthly website, social media activity, and building reports, which we've all received in our packets. I need a motion to approve.
Second.
There is nothing unusual in this month's consent agenda. Unless there are any questions, my suggestion is to approve as written.
Any comments or questions from the board? Role call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaver?
Aye.
Mrs. LaVon Park?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiger?
Aye.
We are happy to have our Employee of the Year recognition tonight. And I have a couple of resolutions I'm going to read. The first is honoring all the people who were nominated for that award. This is a resolution honoring the 2425 Employees of the Year nominees of School District 170, Leonole Counties. Whereas the Board of Education of Dixon Public School District 170 recognizes that outstanding staff served Dixon Public Schools. And whereas the Board of Education is especially appreciative of the extra effort employees make to provide a valuable service to the schools and the community they serve. And whereas, as a result of nomination by their peers and members of the community, several employees have been considered eligible for Employee of the Year honors. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Board of Education of Dixon Public School District 170, Leonole Counties, Illinois, that the nominees for Employee of the Year honors included certified staff were Danielle Andrews, Keely Dewey, Roger Fagan, Jordan Miller, Addie Pace, Aaron Rogers, Mackenzie Shitman. Non-certified employees were Catherine Leslie and Chris Magnifici. They have been nominated by their peers for consideration of this honor and who are hereby duly recognized for their service to the Dixon Public Schools. In testimony whereof, said District 170, by its Board of Education, will have this resolution signed by the President and attested to by the Secretary dated this 21st day of May, 2025. We honor all those people who were nominated. And then, this is the resolution honoring the winners. This is the resolution honoring employees selected as the 2425 Employees of the Year Dixon School District 170, Leonole Counties, Illinois. Whereas the Board of Education Dixon Public School recognizes that outstanding staff that served Dixon Public Schools. Whereas the Board of Education is especially appreciative of extra effort employees make to provide a valuable service to the schools and community. Whereas as a result of nomination by their peers and members of the community, selected by a disinterested group of judges, Jordan Miller and Catherine Leslie have been designated as the most worthy of all the outstanding nominees for this award. Now therefore be it, and it hereby resolved by the Board of Education, Dixon School District 170, that Jordan Miller and Catherine Leslie are to be honored appropriately as outstanding employees of District 170 for the school year 2425. And that the names of these employees shall be entered on a permanent traveling school district plaque, which shall be displayed on a rotating basis in a prominent location of the home schools of the honored employees. In testimony whereof, said School District 170, by its Board of Education, will have this resolution signed by the President, attested to by the Secretary, and dated this 21st day of May, 2025. We're very proud and honored to see these people here tonight. And if they would come up, we have some plaques for you both.
I think Mrs. Glenn has some words to say.
All right, so first I'm gonna talk about Jordan Miller. So Mrs. Miller has taught in our district for, or in a variety of roles. She's taught third grade, kindergarten, first grade, and instructional special education. Currently she is in one of our instructional classrooms at Washington School, our functional communication classroom, where she has students that either are diagnosed with autism or have significant communication needs. If you work with Mrs. Miller, it's obvious to see that she brings sunshine wherever she goes. She also does a lot of things to brighten our school, whether that's with students or with staff. She actually organized a neurodiversity awareness month, where she designed and sold T-shirts, which her little boy is running around here and he's wearing it. It's darling. Yeah, protein sales. She also created lessons, daily lessons for teachers. She sent out a calendar with links that they can click on to teach their students about neurodiversity each day. And she even pushed into every single classroom and taught lessons to help staff and students understand all of our learners in our building. And then with the money she raised this year, she actually bought items to make a sensory wall for our whole school to enjoy. So you can, a lot of things you can see that she does well, but most importantly is how she makes everyone around her feel. So I'm gonna share some direct quotes from her coworkers and a parent who actually nominated her. So the first one, "She makes those who work with her better. She's a valuable team member who listens and is willing to try new suggestions. She makes her paraprofessionals better by explaining to them why a student might need certain needs and teaching them how to best support her students. Jordan continues to strive for the best for her students. She pushes them when ready to have more and more time in general education. Jordan's students have many needs and requires much support. She's always looking for new ways to assist her students. She uses low lighting, flexible seating options, modified expectations while still holding firm boundaries, microphones, alternative community options, and other sensory strategies. She is an asset at team meetings, brainstorming, and strategizing with her team members. Jordan's primary goal as an educator is to have homeschool communication, to update parents on their child's successes and challenges. Mrs. Miller's teaching style, dedication, and commitment has helped our child go from not communicating to using an AAC device and visuals to communicate." I could go on and on and read many more quotes from the people who nominated her and the parents who work with her, but I just wanna share one more quote that I feel like sums up Mrs. Miller and how we all feel about her. "Jordan is a leader by example. By watching her interact with others, it makes everyone around her want to be better." So thank you.
So I came to Dixon, kind of stumbled upon Dixon, not really intending to be here at all, to be honest with you. Um, oh gosh, please don't do that. And I haven't left since because of the community and the way that everybody in the schools have made me feel. Like, I'm pregnant, so that's why. Dan Kelly did a good job explaining that I bounced around all over the place, but where I really found, I mean, nobody can keep me until this position. And this is where I really found my home. And it's because of the people I work with, but also the students. And it's the opportunity to work with them every day. I have heard so many wonderful names of educators that are so, so worthy of this reward. And I would have never imagined that I would be up here for so, just very grateful and very humbled to be experiencing this at all. And I'm very appreciative. First to the board and to the committee that chose me, thank you so much. It is an honor and somewhere I never thought I'd be, especially in eight years of education, so thank you. I haven't read any of this, so I don't know why I have this here. To my incredible team that nominated me, thank you so much. I am here because of you, and I know what I know because of you. You've taught me so much that I've been able to utilize in my own home. But also my classroom and your mentorship, your collaboration, and your heart have truly shaped the way that I am. And I hope to continue to be a good educator, so thank you so much. To my phenomenal administration, high and low. Thanks for supporting my ideas all the time. You've never let my crazy run, run you out of the room. You're always willing to sign any PO that I have that might be questionable. And I really appreciate that you have supported me and allowed me to do what I can for these kids, so thank you so much. And to the amazing peers that I work with, you're my steady dependable force that brings my plans to life every single day. You bring patience, joy, and dedication to our classroom, and I'm in awe of your hard work and compassion. And you work tirelessly, sometimes more than me, so thank you. And most of all, my students, who have changed my life in ways that I could never fully explain. They're the reason I wake up and I want to come to work, which I think is something that we're not all thinking right now in education. So I really value what they've brought to me so much that I want to hold on to them as they go to second grade this next year. Their resilience, honesty, humor, and courage push me to be better every single day. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you to everyone. And thank you for allowing me to be in this district in the first place and do this job that I love so much. I'm not going anywhere anytime soon, so thank you. I'm very grateful.
All right, so I was very lucky. Both of these Employees of the Year are from Washington School. I don't think we said that yet. So next, we have Catherine Leslie. And she is one of our paraprofessionals in our school. I had the privilege to stand here and recognize someone whose impact happens behind the scenes a lot of the time, but has made the building such a better place. She builds relationships with students as not just part of her job, but the heart of it. She even has a few nicknames that students have given her. We have Mrs. Sunshine, Mrs. Sunflower, Mrs. Rose, and my favorite, just Leslie. Catherine has worked at Dixon Public Schools for 12 years. And from the moment I started at Washington, she has been someone I can count on. Not only to be there for students, but also there for staff. She has volunteered to be on our conscious discipline action team. She helps plan fun activities on the social committee. She's also an active member of DESPA. And she updates our wish well board every single day with our employees that aren't here. She writes their names to wish them well. She takes initiative, like I said, to build relationships with all students, even the most challenging. So I also want to quote some of the awesome things that were said about her from her nomination. Catherine encourages others to be their best, adults and children alike. Catherine is a great observer in the classroom, and she jumps in to help out where she is needed to make every classroom she is in run smoothly. She creates a welcome, caring, and loving environment for the students she works with and the students throughout the building. She gets to know the students she works with. Last year she worked with a student who loved animals. She created an animal scavenger hunt for them, for him, so they were able to take breaks while also learning about animals. They even had safari hats to make it feel even more realistic. The student also requested her to make the most elaborate animals, objects, all things out of blocks and connectors, and she would do it. I tried to find a picture, but I couldn't find any evidence, so if you have some, I will share it with the board. Ask any teacher who's worked alongside Catherine, and they'll tell you. She makes a difference every single day, not by seeking the spotlight, but by being exactly what our students need. A trusted adult, a patient guide, and sometimes just someone who makes them smile when the days feel hard. I would like to share one more quote that really paints a picture of who Catherine truly is. Catherine helps others improve because that's not only her job, but it's who she is. And that's so good, so thank you Catherine.
Yes, Jordan may mean that.
Well, Employee of the Year, I honestly thought this was a prank at first. Or somebody clicked the wrong name in the email. But here I am, and there's no take backs. Education is not just a job, it's a calling. It's showing up when you're tired, giving it all when you feel like you have nothing left, and believing in your students, sometimes more than they believe in themselves. But truly, every day I walk into Washington, I feel lucky. Lucky to work with colleagues who show up every day with a smile on their face and love in their hearts. Lucky to be a part of the Washington family that shares resources, laughter, and chocolate. Lucky to have students who challenge and inspire me and who remind me I'm not as cool as I think I am. I'm also incredibly blessed with my own family, my husband, my kids, my parents, and my sisters. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for being my foundation, my support, and my greatest blessings. Thank you Dixon Public Schools for this honor. It hasn't always been easy, but it's always been worth it.
If anybody wants to take pictures, you can come on up here.
And this is our awesome model Hudson. And he also goes to preschool at Washington.
Still have the box of Kleenex there?
We have one Kleenex.
I saw you, I saw you pass the box over, but... Well, because I'm thinking we might need it again.
Note for next year.
So I'd known Katie since she was a little girl and didn't know that was her newer phase. Thank you for coming. We move on to honor the 2425 retirees for this year. And they are DeeDee Saboo, DHS Guidance Office Secretary; Keely Dewey, Jefferson Special Ed Teacher; John Empen, DHS PE Drivers Ed Teacher; Diane Frye, our HR Coordinator and Assistant to the Superintendent; Dino Frye, the DHS Attendant Secretary; Jenny Kirchner, DHS Special Education Teacher; Lori Meyer, Washington Office Assistant; Laura Sward, RMS Secretary; Suzanne Weaver, Jefferson Third Grade Accelerated Teacher; and Barb Weiss, DHS Medical Records Clerk. If any of those retirees are there, come on up.
It's a busy night tonight. There's the Black Loria, there's regional track meets, so...
Congratulations, Diane. Sorry to see you both. Can you say it?
It's been an emotional night already.
No more Kleenexes. We got a whole box now, so go ahead.
So Diane has been here the whole time I have and has really been a big help all these years. But she has really mentored Erin. And hopefully, we can slide right in there. Erin's doing a great job, but thanks for only done it for the district. I often thought you should be running the district sometime. Not to take anything away from you, but her knowledge is great, since you were Secretary at Reagan Church School. And John, I don't know, I think I just wanna talk about you.
Yeah, you know, you talk about a double hit here. You know, not only losing, first of all, I started out with Al Lincoln, but then he gets, you know, to retire before me, so... But they're both outstanding employees and just human beings, and we're so thankful. And so are the folks that are not able to be here tonight. And it's just great that we want to honor them. And I know both of them, I think, have committed to come back and sub, which is great news. So we just thank them for their presence tonight, their presence every day in our buildings and classrooms, and same with those that couldn't be with us too.
Long, good years that we've had these people.
Yes.
And we thank them for all of that. And we hope that you have supper on the table. Thank you. Next, we have the Principal Association Awards.
And Mr. Tate from the high school is coming up.
So we are, at Dixon High School, we're really fortunate. This is the second year that we've had some recipients of the IPA Award, which is the Home Depot Principal Association Award. This is an award that's given for leadership for employees or for staff that demonstrate leadership amongst the whole staff. So we are fortunate to recognize Michelle Bailey for our teacher recipient, and Amy Eber, I think she's in the back waiting there. Right there, for our certified support staff. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about Michelle first and kind of the nomination and how that was. So Michelle is one of two teachers that are nationally board certified in our district, and she brings a unique experience to the classroom. Michelle wanted a challenge, we had that conversation a little bit ago, where she decided to move from teaching primarily junior students to teaching freshman students. And she wanted to kind of revitalize that new curriculum that Amplify is doing down in the lower grades and kind of using that to bolster and strengthen the English department. So she's done a tremendous amount of work with that, focusing on skills-based for writing and kind of building their fluency, which I think is why we're seeing some higher results with our scores. And then Michelle, just on a personal note, is someone that I always go to when I need advice. Role model for me as a teacher and as an administrator, a new administrator. Michelle is also very strong and encouraging younger staff to get involved with the building, get involved with committees. She just sent an email out. She's been our PRC rep for quite some time, and she's encouraging other people to kind of step into that role to build their capacity as leaders. So we're very fortunate for Michelle Bailey. If you want to come and get your award.
Oh, you don't get away that easy. We're gonna take pictures and all kinds of stuff.
We can wait for, we can wait for Amy Eber. Mrs. Eber is one of our three guidance counselors. And again, on a personal note, that's who I go to when I have any questions. I think she probably gets annoyed with me sometimes. I always pop in like, quick question, quick question. But especially with the teacher shortage, and at Dixon High School, you know, we have kind of the special ed teacher shortage. Amy is one of the people that kind of comes up with some of the most creative solutions of how we can kind of still accommodate the needs of our students and still kind of alleviate the burden on the teachers at the same time. She organizes our awards night, which, you know, we just had the other night, gave away thousands of dollars for that. That's kind of all in her wheelhouse. And then just on a, working with students individually, she is always encouraging them, you know, do your work, get things through. We just had a couple of students that she really was pushing, and they would not have graduated if it was not for her insistence and her communication with those families. And I think she should be recognized for that, so thank you for that.
Congratulations. We move on to the United Way Spirit Award, which was written up in the paper.
So we were notified. Is Bridget Becker still here? You can go ahead and start.
That's great, I know. Hi, Bridget Becker. I teach eighth grade language arts over at Reagan, but I also am the sponsor for the Reagan Builders Club. And this year, Builders Club, myself and Vanessa Ainckney, who's not here, headed up the United Way campaign. And we dedicated the month of October to raising funds. And we were really lucky this year because administration, staff, and all the students were on board. So, do you guys like to say what some of the things we did?
We sold ghost pops and we did candy grams.
We had the elementary schools do a coin drive, and the coin drive raised over $3,000. We had administrators, like Mr. Magnifici, was willing to be duct taped to a post for all the lunch periods. Mr. Shaner was duct taped to a chair, and they rolled around the high school raising money. And Dixon Public Schools raised over $10,000. So we involved everyone, which is why we earned the Spirit Award this year.
So Bridget got ahold of us and said, we don't know what it is, even though you're on the board for action.
What's a part of the shooting?
And she said, they're giving Dixon Public Schools an award. So all of our wonderful principals and who, you know, do whatever they can to raise money. We were lucky enough to all go to the luncheon. We were, as she said, with the Spirit Award, you know, always trying to give and the fun things that we do all throughout the campaign drive. We were given this beautiful stained glass plaque. And if you've noticed, we've added a few things to our boardroom since you were last here. And this area right here... And this area right here, where the board has their IASB award, and they're going to make a nice little area so we can have this hanging in the boardroom so it can be seen every month during a board meeting. And we were just very surprised and very grateful. United Way does so much for not only Dixon Public Schools, but their community. And we thank Bridget from the bottom of our hearts, our Builders Club and all that they do to raise money. Mrs. Aitney out at my office and everything she does to coordinate. And it's just another way, you know, we give back to the wonderful partners in our community.
Next, we have the Drone Soccer Team.
We've learned so much about them.
We've got a little sort of end of year newsletter, kind of highlighting the year that we had. This was our second year of Drone Soccer here in Dixon. Well, look at this crew here. So, you know, this has been our second year of Drone Soccer and it's a full year activity. We started doing practices and things early on and very exciting things happening. Very similar to our first year with hosting a tournament and Nationals. And so we start with our middle school coaches, Mr. Hawes and Mr. Chris Bishop there. And if you guys want to introduce your kids and talk about how your year went?
So, I guess I'll just follow that. So here today, I've got Jacob Went, I've got Kate Kirkoff, I've got my daughter Lily Hawes, I've got Tyler Wadsworth, I've got Anthony Ochoa, and I've got Jake Lozey. We've had a really fun year. We got started off, we started off building the drones all over again for the kids who didn't get to do that last year. Had a long road practicing, rebuilding skills. We got better than last year. At the point where we started coordinating some plays. And it's, we went from last year, we went, made our trip to Nationals. We finished 13th out of 16 teams. This year, Reagan Middle School proceeded past the first round this year, past the second round. We ended up, well, we ended up finishing tied for ninth in a field of 24 teams. So we're showing progress year over year. The kids are getting stronger, they're getting more committed. I'd say if I had to pick a favorite moment from the year, was when we got that first win. It happened during the school day. So I got word back from the school that Mr. Magnifici had the ability to do a PA announcement to the kids in the classes, saying that Reagan Middle School had gotten their first win at the Nationals Tournament. And he said, you could hear the cheers down the hall. So just seeing the look on the kids' faces when I got to tell them that paid off the entire year, let me tell you. So, yeah, I think, one thing I love about our program is it works for absolutely everybody. We've got kids who are in like everything. And we've got the kids for whom this is the one thing that really makes them a part of our, you know, makes them feel like a part of our community. They come back to school for this, they spend, they get the opportunity to spend time with students that they wouldn't otherwise. So it's a real big deal for those kids, it's a real big deal for me and these other kids and gives us opportunities we wouldn't have otherwise.
So I'll say, a couple of folks could join us tonight. They help out a lot, Kyman Housang, who does a lot of support for the team and is one of our refs. We host our tournament. Candy Lind, who was one of our chaperones for the national trips and dedicated a big full four days of driving and chaperoning. Mr. Went here does all sorts of things. He helps coach on both our high school and middle school team and chaperone and our head ref for our tournament. And all the experience that he brings from other areas that helped make us put a solid program together. And then our high school coaches and our high school team that won the Region 6 Tournament this year. Our head coaches there, Mr. Charlie Bishop and Paul Wilson. So if you can chat about their players.
Yeah, you know, building on the team, the aspects, you know, I have Chris Wadsworth with me and David Leird. David actually got an award out at Nationals this year, being our Leadership Award, I believe, yep. We got some national awards while we were out there. It was our second time out there. For me, you know, I've been to a national tournament before. I've competed in national tournaments before. We went out last year and it was tough. It was very tough to watch us, watch us not do very well, let's be honest. For our first win was one of my greatest moments too. I know as a team, we were building a program, but to watch us physically get better, to watch us compete and see that, yes, we have finally made that next stage and that we are getting better out there, just a test to the dedication that our program is building and having. And that eventually, we will have that competition where these 8th graders are going to be in the high school. They have four to five years. That's where we're lacking. We're lacking in the fact that those top teams have been doing it for three to four years. They have that flight time. We are working on that and strategy as we learn. We're getting new strategies. We learned, there's new positions out there completely that we didn't even think of. So as we go back to the drawing board, it's great for us because it's not just us going back to the drawing board. The students are a part of every aspect of it. And I'll let John talk a little bit about it because he was with us. He got to see the action that kind of goes as, as we build and as we grow as a program. You can see us build. I really liked our seniors this year stepping up to make sure that we're growing. Today, we just had about 230 5th graders show up for an after-school program to say, hey, this is Drone Soccer. We need you guys to come up and be a part of it. Yeah, I would say, yeah, the third one is probably female and all that, and that's important too. It's not, and I told this to the 5th graders today, it's not how old you are, it's not your gender, it's not your athletic ability, it has to do with your ability to come in and focus and get some flight time and feel comfortable. And as soon as you do that, you can compete with your dad. And you will make your family members or your mom look silly because you can do something they can't. And it's funny to watch some of the parents come and try it after we give it and their kid is sitting there doing right through the hoop and they're trying to just get it off the ground. And it's a fun experience, it's a great experience. I'd like to leave it to our seniors who have been here for two years to give you a little bit about how they felt. And then again, John. Go ahead, buddy.
What was I going to say again?
Just, how do you see it, bro?
Yeah, I did my first year and last year and I really didn't know what it was about. I just wanted to fly drones. So once I figured out Drone Soccer was a thing, I'm like, I could get with this. And I just flew drones better and I'm like, yeah, I can score goals, I can, or I can block. I can't score goals, but I can block it.
You helped the team the first year that you had that one team off all by yourself.
Oh, yeah, that was last year.
Different year, different difference.
That's true. And the good part is that, as he talks about this, he understood that this is my position and then he actually helped strategize that position, right? As we, before we went, we came up with, yeah, exactly.
Chris? This year, I really saw some improvement with just our overall team. Because last year and to the start of this year, we had kids show up, week one, skip week two, three, four, come to week five, and then just paper out. But towards the end of this year, especially second semester, we had the same 10 kids come in every week. They really got to know their drones, they had their own drones. And they all grew as a team, yeah.
Thank you. John, do you have something?
Thanks for giving me a credit or something.
Yeah, you were with us, yeah.
That's true. It can't be a lot of tech departments that do this level of getting down into the after-school program like this and spending a lot of time on this. This speaks to your leadership and speaks to all you guys, how excited you are about this. So I feel super lucky that Dixon's got, of course, Drone Soccer, which almost nobody does. But the level of dedication you guys have in making this happen is super exciting for me to see. Thanks.
We're very proud to have this team.
Anybody else? Paul, Chris, anybody want to say anything?
Charlie said it all.
I'll tell you this, from my time in sports and everything else I've been a part of, you can tell when people, the leaders are excited, everybody else gets excited. You can tell from Dick, you can tell from Charlie, the passion is there. This will keep growing as long as everybody keeps pushing the same way. So appreciate you guys, thank you.
And thanks to our sponsors, great sponsors, staff, admin, community, business sponsors. We get a lot of support and it's expensive to send this group of people plus, you know, how many hundreds of miles and how many hours behind the wheel to get out there and hotel rooms for three nights and stuff. So it takes a lot of support to keep it going and we appreciate that, that we have that strong support with our community and our sponsors.
We move on to Student of the Month, DHS Students of the Month.
Do you remember last month, we had two Reagan and this is two high school for this month.
Evening, this is Jared Shaner, Principal at Dixon High School. And it is my honor to introduce to you our April Student of the Month, Cullen Shaner. Cullen has done a great job over his four years of balancing academics, being near the top of his class along with athletics and extracurriculars. Cullen has participated in football, basketball, and track all four years, as well as been involved in broadcast club, doing community service, and a variety of other things during his time. Congratulations, Cullen.
My name is Cullen Shaner. I'm a senior at Dixon High School. I have been a three-sport athlete for all four years, including football, basketball, and track. I also joined the broadcasting club as a junior for commentating. Three words to describe my senior year would be surreal, exciting, and impactful. I can't just name one favorite teacher at DHS, but I will give three, and that would be Mr. Padilla, Mrs. Bailey, and Mrs. Beck. And I would say just because they don't only care about your high school, but they care about your personal goals and life goals. What advice would I give to freshmen? And that would just be be involved. Don't stay in a tight area, branch out, meet new people, make new friends. If I could create one mandatory class, it would be the WAC CEO Business Class. I feel like I've learned so many life lessons from that that I can take over the next four years in college that I would have never gotten from anything else. My plans next year, I'm attending the University of Illinois and I'm going into Finance and Ag Business. And I see myself in five years trying to get my master's degree from the University of Illinois.
Good evening, this is Jared Shaner, Principal at Dixon High School. And it is my honor to introduce to you our May Student of the Month, Emma Olson. Emma is another tremendous example of what we want our students to be here at DHS. Emma's been involved in a variety of things over her four years, including Key Club, volleyball, track and field, just to name a few. One thing that stands out about Emma is her positive personality. Her smile lights up the hallway. She's kind and empathetic to everyone that she meets. I have no doubt that Emma will move on and do great things. She is going to study in the medical field as she leaves us and heads to college, where she will also be running track and field. Congratulations, Emma.
Hi there, my name is Emma Olson and this year I'm a senior at Dixon High School and this year's May Student of the Month. Through my Dixon High School experience, I've participated in many different activities such as working at Arthur's Garden Deli, being Pinky Petunia and representing our community, participating in varsity volleyball, participating in varsity track and field, and being a part of Key Club. If I had to describe my senior year in three words, it would be fast, fun, and full of pride. All of the Dixon High School teachers are extraordinary. However, Senora Fitzenko is by far my favorite because she just brings such a fun atmosphere to the classroom, as you can probably see by this amazing picture of her. This photo shows our first ever Socktober Box, which was put together by me and a couple of my friends through Key Club. Through Key Club, I have met so many amazing people and I would advise that any freshman joins as many organizations as they can and stay as involved as you possibly can all four years. Before starting my CNA class at Whiteside, I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life. And honestly, that's very important for people to know before college. So if I could create one mandatory course for future seniors, it would be a job discovery course where they can figure out what they want to do in the future. Speaking of future, for the next four years, I plan to attend Carthage College running track and double majoring in neuroscience and Spanish. In five years, I plan to be beginning medical school to obtain my medical doctorate and hopefully start saving some lives. Thank you all so much for your time and for this opportunity. I really hope that this video was something different and I hope you enjoyed. Thank you.
So Mr. Shaner is out with Cullen, or Sectional's Track today. So we have Emma with us here and like Mr. Shaner said, Emma's like the epitome of a Dixon High School student. Community service, academics, athletics, she kind of hits all those boxes of what we would expect and what we want our students to earn. So I know she wants to get to back to work, so I'm trying to see that. No, we're all good.
Any questions?
That was amazing.
Yeah, that was really good. Thank you. I loved the music. It was Where Did All The Time Go? It's a great song to represent how I'm ending my high school career. I'm really, really, really sad to be leaving Dixon and going to college, but it's really great to have a place to call home. I love Dixon so much and I'll be back soon.
Well, good. Love to hear that. Love to hear that. Any questions, anybody?
Do you want to take a photo?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. What a presence. All of these confidence and presence.
Organizing all of this.
And I'm sure she'll be very successful. DEA Teachers of the Month.
Good evening. The end of the year, I think we could celebrate all teachers getting this far. We've got lots and lots of teachers. For the sake of time, we had like 55 teachers nominated. And I mean, I was talking to Candy Lynn, who gets all of these, and she's just like, it's so uplifting to hear all the wonderful things that teachers are doing. And as I'm reading through these, it's just, you know, everybody getting above and beyond, taking care of not only the kids in the class, but the people in the community or in their building community. But one teacher stood out, 12 nominations this month, from Washington School, Teresa Sholders, the school social worker there. So she is the winner of our gift card. Just a few things I just want to say about her. It says that she is the glue that holds the building together. She's an amazing asset to Washington, has made so many connections with families and students and staff, checks in on the students and staff daily. Of course, she's got Ginger, which always helps to keep everybody calm and just that refreshing person in the building. So we wanted to congratulate her. But we had a number from every building, Washington teachers, I think, every teacher was. But we had number from every building, Washington teachers, I think every teacher was nominated, along with the kindergarten team as a whole, a number of teachers from Jefferson, I think the entire Jefferson staff maybe may have been nominated. I mean, it's just incredible to read through these. I know the administration has been given copies of these, but like I said, for the sake of time, we have 55 wonderful, deserving teachers, so congratulations.
Aaron, can you send that to us as well? Just when, in our leisure, we can read through those. Thank you. I know you send committee meeting minutes like you do that. Thank you. And we're ready for Bray. Yes, we have Mr. Kevin Schultz, our Director of Building and Grounds, and Mr. Mark Miller from Bray Architects, to discuss the tenure health-life safety presentation and facility
Assessment.
Assessment.
So Mark Miller is with Bray and Associates. He has been through all of our buildings, he's done the majority of all of our health-life safety review items, as he's kind of the guru out of their group for health-life safety, and was also very familiar with the facility assessment. I'm not going to take up any of his time, but he's here with us tonight to provide some information for it.
Thank you all for having us here tonight, I appreciate that. My name is Mark Miller with Bray Architects. I'm an architect, and I've been doing this for a long time, which you can tell by right here, right? But I wanted to start with the life safety survey, tenure life safety work first, but before we get into the nitty-gritty, which won't take very long, because we're going to keep it moving, I think you need to acknowledge that Kevin and his staff and the custodial staff have done a really good job of maintaining the buildings. When you walk through the buildings, you can see the pride in how the buildings are maintained, and it's very, very obvious, and we'll see some more of that here down the road, but I did want to mention that, because you don't always see that, and it's nice when it does show up.
I paid him to say that, by the way.
So the life safety process, you can have a life safety amendment, you use life safety funds for repairs of life safety-approved items at any time, but the state mandates that once every 10 years, you have to do a 10-year survey of all of the student facilities, walk through the buildings, note which items need to be repaired, or replaced, or fixed, or whatever, for those items that are not in compliance with the life safety code. So part of that process is walking through the building, making drawings, making a summary of the survey, and then loading it all into Iowa's, which is the state computer system. It then goes from us, it goes to the district, the district reviews it, approves it, sends it down to the ROE, they review it and approve it, and send it down to Springfield, and they review and approve it, and it comes back approved. So in the part of the process, there's the priority code of the individual work items. Priority code A is for items that are urgent, and those need to be completed in one year. And we look at this as the items that really directly affect life safety on a short-term basis. The next category, next priority code is B, which is required work, and they like to see that done within three years, but you're required to have it done within five years. So, and then the third priority code, which we didn't use very much anymore, is code C, which is recommended work. The state has changed the requirements of those kinds of projects, and there's a lot of hoops to have to jump through. So typically, we don't do that priority code C anymore because of that, so. We walked through again all the buildings, and noted the individual items. Part of the process is picking out those items that we think are in noncompliance, and then putting a dollar amount of an estimate of amount of work to repair that or fix that problem. When you go through this and approve the life safety amendment that's sent off through the process, you are committing to fix the problem, you are not necessarily committing to spend a dollar mark. So if in the process, you can do it for half the amount that we've got on the estimates, no problem, but you have to fix those problems. The estimate is just that, it's an estimate of what we feel the fair market value is, if you will, of that repair. And you can see, none of the buildings have a really very long list. Most of the items are due to damage, failure, because it's old, kids getting carried away, changes in use. A lot of times, spaces, one year it's a classroom, the next year it's a workroom, and that workroom has different requirements in the code than a classroom does. So since you're using it as a workroom on the day when we walk through, that's what it is, and if it's missing a fire extinguisher, because that's one of the requirements for workrooms, we mark that down, so. Most of this stuff is not, excuse me, not really very significant, but it is important. Another group of things that are much higher in dollar amount, as you've seen, are roof replacements. Some of the buildings, the roofs are in really good condition, some of them have some challenges, so. And just an FYI, through the process, the A and Bs, I have a lot of those already located and looked at. We're already getting pricing from either contractors, if it has to be done outside of the district, or a lot of things, our maintenance guys, our talented staff that we have, can be done in-house and save the district the money. The good news is, working with Mr. Campbell, we have identified roughly about $50,000 of the A priorities, and even some of the B priorities, that we will be working on for this year, once it gets approved through the state and the Iowa's program. We expect to have those things up and done before the start of school, which will be a major improvement in all of those areas. Fire extinguishers, exit signs, emergency lighting, even some smoke detectors, heat detectors, those types of items are what we're identifying as some of our A and B priorities, and we will be working through all of that in the near future. So there's just a summary of where we are dollar-wise, and I think you've looked at the breakdown, you can understand that. Any of our major portion of work, especially the roofs, that will be the stuff that will be coming back to the board eventually, as we bid those projects out, that will be something that will get expended. The biggest roof is over at the Reagan-Madison facility, the main Reagan portion and a little bit of the Madison portion still needs to be done. That's about a million dollars, give or take, on the roofing. That will be saved up through our health-life safety, our nickel levy that is brought in from our taxes, that will be saved, and then in our tenure planning, through Mr. Campbell's tenure plan that we're looking at, we will designate, hopefully, the year that we get to expend those dollars to do those repairs. In the short term, we will obviously take care of the roofs and handle small leaks as they come up, but we need to do a complete roof replacement, and that's going to take us a little bit of time to build up that fund balance, to be able to expend those dollars.
Any questions on life safety? Great. Facilities assessment. Everybody says, oh, we've got this 260-some page, but I hope he doesn't go through the whole thing. No, I'm not. So it is a living document, there's a lot of information in there. I'm going to walk through just a summary of the buildings, and then kind of explain how we go about each individual building, and you can then, at your leisure, look at the details of each building. Things change, so this was again based on the day that we walked through, some of the things may be better now, they've been fixed, they've been repaired, they've been improved, some things may be worse, but still, it gives you an idea of the facilities as they are. We did walk through the buildings, the engineers walked through the buildings, we look at a whole bunch of different kinds of categories and topics, and individual items under an individual category, individual topic. Some of the things that are important, roof needs, doors, Americans' disabilities, handicap accessibility, and the assessment process. So when we walk through this, when the engineers walk through this, we take our notes, we take our pictures, and we note things in three categories. They're either good, fair, or poor, green, yellow, or red. And we try to maintain a simple overview, because it's easy to understand those three categories, right? We don't really quibble over, is it on the bottom edge of the yellow, or the top edge of the red, because you can get lost and spend a lot of time dicker-ing over those things. And we're looking for this to be a lot of information that's easily accessible and easily understood. So just to give you an overview of the buildings, we call this the heat sheet, right? Because when you see something red, it pops right out, right? And so those green items are in good condition, and you're probably looking at 10 to 20 years before you need to spend a large amount of money to repair those things. The yellow category, you're looking probably in that five to 10-year range, the things are coming to the end of their life, their warranties may be running out, they may be able to be repaired, but at the end of that repair period, you're going to have to replace it. And then the good items, the items in green, those items are, I'm sorry, in red, those items are in poor condition, and you're usually looking at somewhere between one to five years before you have to actually physically do something to do that. So if you look at Jefferson, you can see that red pops out, and exterior windows, well, are windows something that are important to the building, keep the weather out, the heat and the cooling? Yes. Are they in poor condition? Yes. Do they need to be fixed this coming summer? Probably not. But it's something that you need to put on your radar and say, hey, in the near future, we're going to have to start talking about, how are we going to resolve that problem? Washington Elementary, again, the windows pop out, everything else, it looks great, doesn't it? Lots of blue, or green, lots of yellow, and very little red. So the individual categories we'll look at later, but you can see where, again, that building is in overall really good condition.
And I will say, the majority of those elementary buildings, Washington and Jefferson, have the original building windows. They are from, some of them are from 1952, they are 70 years old, still functioning, still repairable, but at some point in time, for efficiency standards and other things, you can get the low-e glass, you can get shaded glass, there's a lot of variables that can improve the indoor learning environment in the classroom. They also closed up a lot of those windows, if you remember, you will see some of the areas that were bricked in back in the probably early to mid-'80s, when energy efficiency was a big deal. They took the single-pane windows out, and they put in a brick infill wall, it was great for energy efficiency, wasn't very good for natural lighting in the classrooms. So those are some of the things that we walk back to the board, hey, do we want to open these rooms back up to that better learning environment with the natural lighting? It also reduces electric use, there's a lot of other things that come with it, so that would be something that the board eventually will be asked to take a look at. You can see at Madison, down on the roofs, it's all yellow, right? And we know that's a problem, and we've got that on the life safety amendment, and we've got that in Mark's planning, and so we know that's going to be addressed here in an orderly fashion, so we feel good about that, right? RMS, really, you know, can't complain, right? Very little red showing. High School, again, very little red, we've got some roofs, some of the roofs are really bad, and we know that, and they're on the list, and they will be addressed here in the near future, so. Just an overall map of the district boundaries, and where buildings are located. And so we'll just look at Jefferson, the breakdown of Jefferson, they all follow the same format, the information is, of course, tailored to each building, but the format's the same. Originally built in 1952, about 54,451 square feet, I'm glad it wasn't 452 square feet, right? Just some basic background information, the overall site, the building location, then a breakdown of when the building was added on to. It's had four different additions, the main building and three different additions over the years, and that's noted and color-coded, and just the details of the floor plans, then a summary of the pieces that go into this breakdown. And so we look at all sorts of individual ideas, items, interior analysis, we've noted different items, we've shown pictures of those items, we've noted them, things to be worried about, things to be concerned about, things to be repaired, or just things to manage. And a lot of this information does help with our tenure planning process as well. Noted on some of these things, interior flooring, interior doors, roofs, all of those different complete systems or components will be listed in each of these schools, so it gives us a little bit of an advantage in the planning process as well. Flooring analysis, again, we note where items that might be asbestos, and we did not test it, but that's something to be concerned about. And that red area that is actually highlighted there, that's the east hallway, I will let you know that's part of our SMPG grant through the state. As you know, we have been doing flooring removal in all of the buildings, this is the last major section of asbestos flooring in the entire district, and it's scheduled to begin, I believe, the last week in June, the removal will happen, and the reinstallation is scheduled for around July 21st. So that red area that Mark is talking about will go away in the future. Exterior analysis, condition of masonry, condition of expansion joints, etc., same with the doors. And that masonry piece, obviously having our mason on staff, that will be something that I will be sharing with Eric, so that he can take and start planning for the repairs and/or replacement as needed in those areas as well. Just numbering individual windows and giving those conditions, again, it kind of all looks the same, but there's a few that aren't quite as bad. Key note of where those are located. Roof condition, overall site condition, ADA compliance. And you can see that that was a lot of information, but we don't want to read it all tonight, right? But are there any questions?
In this, through your reminder here, one of the things the board's going to have to decide during the action items are the tenure health-life safety needs, those that need to be done in 12 months, within five years, or a quote longer. Is that in here?
That is not in the individual stuff, it is just in the packet for the health-life safety.
This is what we've wanted done for a long time.
It is a great thing, both for the board, to be able to think about that long-range planning and vision. You know, our buildings are from 1952 at Washington and Jefferson, you know, they're 73 years old, or whatever the age is on those. That is something that the board, looking long-term, in another 20 years, what's going to happen to those buildings? You know, where are we going to be at district-wide? It'll be long past my tenure, but this is the first piece of that document that at least brings that highlight to the board to help make decisions. And ultimately, I will tell you, this is going to be a guide for me as well, to be able to help start planning, hey, I've seen some of these problems and areas, let's start trying to resolve some of them at the lowest level with our guys internally, before we have to do major input from outside contractors. So it's a guidebook for us, it's a help with the plan, but more importantly, I think it's great information for the board to think about the long-range vision and plan for the district. You folks have the problem of having to look 20, 25, 30 years down the road, where's this district going to be? I'm going to be long gone, retired, going to be out recreating, but that will be something that, as a board and a collective, that it needs to be thinking about.
So real quick, there's those two different things that Bray has prepared here, one is the health-life safety, and one is this stuff. Is that right?
Correct.
And so the 10-year health-life safety is something we were mandated to do by the government, this is something that we...
This is additional information, it is just, it doesn't need to be acted on, it is merely an opportunity to provide data to let the board know where our buildings and our facilities are at as a whole, and it's great information. So the tenure we did back in 2015, I was here when that was done, it does have to be mandated every 10 years, it is not... It is not a choice of things. The architects come in with an open mind of, here's what we see at this snapshot of a moment. Here's the things that we need to see corrected. Here's the dollars we think it's going to cost. Here's the timeframe in which we think it should be done, prioritized by the health life safety issues.
Was there a study like this done before this, to your knowledge?
There was one way, way, way back, I'm going to say into the eighties.
Yeah.
That information is not even viable because we didn't have, Reagan Middle School wasn't here until 1994.
It exists.
So it was really not information that could be gleaned from, any information could be...
It'd be useless at that point.
Exactly. But this is a living document that, you know, if we want an update in three, four years, you want to see improvements. Ray can come back and say, oh, hey, here's the changes that have been made, more information for you to look at.
Great. And I assume we have an electronic copy of this as well?
Absolutely.
Something we can get shared with the board too?
Yes.
So with this information, I look back in the past, right? We had the high school that had $23 million in health life safety we had to do. Is this something that we can move forward with and not have this 10 years from now going, we need $23 million as a district, I'm saying the high school, but like, look at Reagan, their roof needs replacing. There's a lot of reds, a lot of roof replacement. That's not important today, but 10, 15 years from now, we can use this to avoid a $23 million cost.
So I could just go ahead and start. So first of all, you've heard Kevin mention 10-year plans. Every principal, some more prompt than others. I was prompt, I just wanted to let you know. Including tech, Kevin, we've integrated curriculum into a 10-year planning document. We have been laying now, we're starting to lay them over the top of each other to formulate a roadmap for the board. That will be shared with you so that you can discuss and problem solve at the retreat this July. It's not, it's not just our decision, it's not only our decision, you know? It's our job to inform, provide you with the information, make recommendations to you. But ultimately, we execute what you want. And that's what being on the board is for. This document provides us with a lot of detail for that process. We can connect it back. Kevin has many projects in his mind, the great thing that's happening is, is you go to the principals, one of our building principals, and we see a lot of similarities, we see a lot of matching. From a health life safety perspective, that is different. And when we get to the Health Life Safety Amendment, where you will actually be asked to approve it tonight, I've actually already carved out a financial roadmap for you to see. In a nutshell, we already have $800,000 in health life safety. We bring in roughly $300,000 a year in health life safety. So if you start doing that math, that 1.7 million, 1.8 million, which it won't cost us that because a lot of those items will do cheaper, you know? They overestimate that they're supposed to. Because if they don't overestimate, they say...
There's a long story behind that.
There's a long story behind that, we won't get into that. But that's their, they need to do that because you're going to appropriate funds. That's what you're being asked to do. You are asked to say, approve the survey, here's the funding for it, go. We have that set up. And the nice thing is, is it won't be 1.7 million, it'll come in at a much lower rate than that, much lower price. So we're set up to do it. We are not borrowing money to do it, I'll say that again, we are not borrowing money to do it. And over a 10-year cycle, if you think about a 10-year cycle, at roughly $300,000 a year in a levy, that's $3 million. So as we leverage county facility sales tax dollars, we, in addition to that, would have $3 million every 10 years to put into health life safety, health life safety projects. The big bulk of these projects this year, or in this 10-year, is the roofs and HVAC. And the HVAC and the roofs account for almost 1.3 million of the 1.7.
Not the HVAC controls.
HVAC controls, HVAC controls, not replacing HVAC. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, yes.
And yes, we have a plan to prevent us from ever having to go $23 million and die again. And it was a lot more than $23 million.
Yes, yes.
And really what we foresee when we go to the retreat then, you know, one of the board goals that we always do is usually a facility goal or two. And I really anticipate we'll be taking a look at this health life safety, taking a look at those key priorities. How do they need to be scheduled, how does the board want to schedule them? And becoming, you know, part of the goal-setting process.
Well, and I appreciate you being proactive in this study now and going forward as opposed to reactive, so.
It's a big component for everything that we want to do, to provide information to the board to make informed decisions. This is a great help for everybody.
Well, and it's access to it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you. I received an email from Elizabeth Dunlap regarding concerns with the additional 30 minutes added to the school day. We'll discuss that letter, she only sent it to me. We'll discuss that letter in closed session and talk about a response to her letter.
She sent it to everybody.
Yeah.
Oh, did you?
Okay. Was there any other correspondence, Margot?
No.
Or no, nobody signed the sheet either. We move on to action items. And we have old business, the election of Vice President. During the May 6th board meeting, the board was unable to select a Vice President of Board of Education. To neither candidate, receiving on a majority of votes cast. The board will vote again on Vice President at this time. The candidates are Brandon Rogers, who was nominated by Linda LeBlanc Parks, and John Wadsworth, who was self-nominated. Nominations were closed at the May 6th meeting, and no further nominations will be made. We will begin voting in the order that the candidates were nominated, starting with Brandon Rogers. All right. Roll call.
He's ready.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gates.
Nay.
Mrs. Shaver.
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth.
Nay.
Mr. Fritz.
Nay.
Mrs. Weiger.
Aye.
Mrs. Grubig is supposed to have counted the votes.
We have four, yay, Mr. Rogers.
By receiving a majority of the votes cast, Brandon is elected Vice President of the Board of Education. And that's the end. Congratulations.
Thank you. Except that thing's the beginning, not the end.
Continuation.
Exactly.
We need a motion that the board establish a budget hearing for the fiscal year '25 as presented.
Second.
So at this time of the year, we always set a budget hearing. That's what you're being asked to do tonight. Remember, the creation of a budget for the school district is prescribed through legislation and has a variety of steps. Starting with the setting of a budget hearing and presentation of the budget, which is at your table tonight. In addition to that, there will be a notification put in the paper over the next few weeks so that the public is aware, our, the budget that you have at your table is on display upstairs as described in the rules, and as well, it has been posted to the website. I do want to just, very, from a very transparent perspective, we do have a deficit budget. We approved an original adopted deficit budget at the start of the year, this is a deficit budget again. Does not require a deficit budget plan. Next month, I will have a detailed summary outlining the differences between the adopted budget and the disamended budget, as well as a variety of strategic opportunities to bring the budget back into alignment. From a very simple perspective, I just share these two items with you. First of all, over the last five years, we have received $16 million that we will never receive again. The reason we haven't faced this issue over the last three or four years is because we received that $16 million. While thankful for that $16 million, and we've put it to good use, it did just delay what was ultimately inevitable. The second aspect of that is, is we have seen health insurance increase by $2 million, going from $5 million to $7 million in a year, with no offsetting, with no offsetting revenues over this timeframe. The additional revenues that were coming into the district were able to cover the difference. However, as you had heard, I'm sure we phrased the answer cliff, you know, we're kind of falling over that cliff now. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So the next meeting, you said you will have some strategies?
Yes, I will.
For us to consider. We knew this was coming.
I've been expecting this to come.
And Mark, I'm not seeing on here, what's the amount of the deficit at this point?
I would say that it's $2 million, if you just want kind of a round number.
Exactly.
Which, again, health insurance has gone up about $2 million in that timeframe as well.
Are there other questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Shaver.
Aye.
Mrs. LeBlanc Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Gates.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiger.
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the 10-year health life safety review as presented.
Second.
So we've already had a pretty lengthy discussion. In your packet, you have those really tiny sheets that you couldn't read up there on the board. However, this is the official, this is the dollar amounts and the action, the actual item that's being fixed. To give you a very quick example of why the costs are different, if you look at the very first one at Dixon High School, it says, remove wood wedges from all doors and closers. $500. It does not cost $500 to go pick up the wood wedges and put them aside. That's what we mean by it isn't going to cost that same amount of money. With that being said, I have provided you with a short memorandum here to, that kind of outlines some of the same things that Mr. Miller was actually talking about. And here in the very middle, I've provided you with the roof and HVAC portions or controls is 1.24, and the total is 1.77. So when you think about it from that perspective, the vast majority of it is coming from those two items. As I mentioned, we have over $800,000 in health life safety right now. A couple of months ago, you approved some door work at RMS. That's, so that'll come out of that number, and we'll have $680,000 to go ahead and begin the process. This document here, which is the second page of the memo that I provided for you, gives you a little bit easier to read and understand, and breakdown by school with totals, so that you can kind of follow along with the money and how that kind of flows through. Remember, as he said, we don't really control what is on the health life safety. We control what we put in a 10-year plan. We control the types of projects we want to do. The 10-year health life safety is designed to keep schools in compliance and keep schools up to code as it relates to health life safety. Happy to answer any questions.
What was the HVAC?
So they're controls, they are sensors, computerized controlled chips that will link in and work with our current systems. They're actually kind of getting cheaper because they're working off of wire, those Bluetooth now. Whereas before, you had to hardwire these things in. So there's actually a lot of opportunity to grow the system, make it more efficient, make it more reliable, we'll be able to control it from phones and offsite computers, things like that.
The HVAC item, those are those items that were cut when the major work was all done within the building. For budget reasons, Washington and Jefferson School got very minimal controls. I can tell you, today's cost, let's call it maybe $50,000 compared to what back then was $150,000 or $200,000 for the same type of controls, because now it's wireless and they're interconnected. So it is updating part of the system, but it will tie back into all of the buildings for the controls of individual areas and rooms.
So, oh, I see, there's a priority code for each of the things on here. And the rule, this chart you've got at the top that totals, their total is $1.7 million, is that A, B, and C priorities, all of them?
That's all of it, that's their total, yeah.
And remind me, like, the A stuff, we have to have done by tomorrow or something?
Within a year.
Within one year. And B and C are further out.
Three to five.
I don't see a breakdown, I'm, never, you're going to prioritize the As and you're going to do those first thing you're...
They're going to be done by August 15th.
That's less than a year, that's less than a year, great. The other thing you said was, over 10 years, our revenue for health life safety fund is 3 million?
Yeah, roughly. So like, the levy this year, I think, was $275,000, but if you kind of, there's a qualifier that's going to keep it growing a little bit over the next 10 years, it's just kind of an average of about $300,000.
Okay, and we need to spend over the next 10 years 1.7 million?
That's what they've designated.
Okay.
But there will be other things. We'll, there will be, we can then go to them and ask them to, hey, we think we have doors to replace, or maybe another roof, or some other, some other aspect that's covered within health life safety, and then we can have an amendment done. So it would be the same process you did a few months ago with the doors at Reagan Madison. We already have one, like, the doors at the choir and band room.
Choir and band room and then the custodial area of the kids in high school.
You know, these have been, so the ROE goes through and does these little cert, does inspections on a yearly basis. They've been getting honest about those for a while. They're not in here yet, they will be after we kind of get, let's get, like, get through the roof. Margot's been asking for the roof for five or six years since I got here. So, and it is important, I mean, that it's in bad shape, so it's time, and we'll get there, you know? And also, I would just kind of, one last thing I would kind of comment on is, remember, health life safety funds can only be spent on health life safety. They can't be spent on anything else. You can't transfer them to the Ed Fund for teacher salaries, or even to like debt service to pay debts or things like that. They are for health life safety, that's it. So as long as we have an amendment, we can continue to levy for that $300,000 basically. And that is a legislative amount, it's the nickel, it's the point oh five. We can't raise that number.
And as I said, we get a plan ready with As and Bs and Cs when we have the flood at Jefferson. This is a prime example, when you have an unexpected expense that comes up that has to be dealt with, then you work with your ROE, you're obviously working with your architect then to restructure because that's something that has to be utilized now. We'll access health life safety funds in order to get that done, which will then reprioritize where certain things are done. And that's allowed because you have an emergency and you have to restructure it. And as long as the state knows you are working on it, and again, like Brandon said, then we don't get to a point where we're... and again, like Brandon said, then we don't get to a point where we're 10 years down the road in asking, having a large ask or funding for it.
And our regional office has been very willing to work with us. I, I have let them know our schedule and when things are upcoming and what's going on, and, and they are definitely behind us as far as supporting us in our endeavors through the health, life, safety process.
Like, I'm, there's a lot of Bs in here. You know, the, I mean, there's, there's a lot of As, but there's not a lot of As. But I'm looking at this, and there's a lot of Bs. At what point, I think you answered it already, but do we stop kicking the can down the road? Roofs, like I said, just call it to me, I said, I think a roof is important, right? And they're, and they're expensive. Like, at what point, I'd ask you, with the $300,000 a year, we start chipping away at one school, and is that kind of, I mean, obviously, it's way out here what we're doing, but...
So, the hope would actually be that, you know, this summer, we'll complete the As, next summer will be-
And some of the Bs.
Yeah, some of the Bs. Next summer, we'll be hitting heavily the HVAC controls, with then the roof being the next summer or the following one. And again, that's, you know, we can kind of, you know, monitor that and check that and, and see where more priorities come in. We may choose to work faster on the roofs. We had quite a few repairs at the high school that actually hit repairs and maintenance this year, so it may go to our advantage to actually do those at the high school quicker. But at the same time, it goes to our advantage to bid both projects in their entirety because we can get better pricing that way. So, we want to make sure that the funding is available for, for that when we go to do it.
Thank you.
Some of these big-ticket items, obviously, we're going out to bid, but a lot of these Bs are probably gonna get done internally?
Yeah, several of them are either being done internally. The fire alarm additions and smoke detectors, heat detectors, some horn strobes, those types of things are done from an outside contractor vendor. I have contacted the people who do the majority of our work on fire alarm systems. I'm already getting pricing put together for that, so that we can get on that as soon as the approval process gets going. There again, I expect a lot of those to be wiped off that list by August 15th. And, and Mark is correct, the, the high school roof, we did some repairs. We did a thing that will buy us hopefully a year or maybe two at the most, but we need to be looking for that total fix that's in that number for the high school roof. It's just a couple of small sections within the next year or two.
I think, why I'd find, I think, me speaking, is like, we have this document today, it's leaving, you know, living, breathing, it's gonna change two months from now, so, you know, it's gonna be added on, something's gonna be deleted off, so on and so forth. Maybe every quarter, can we get a updated, this has been resolved from 500 hours to 100 hours here where the door stops?
We're actually preparing to do that already.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Just something as we kind of go and say, this came up that we didn't expect, or...
I would, but, but to be clear, there is nothing going on in the health, life, safety new until these are done. So, this is not a living document.
Okay.
This is, this is a snapshot, and we have to go do this now. And as we start bringing those to an end, we will do amendments to add additional items that we can afford and pay for.
Okay.
Do you have a date set for the roofs?
Well, we're hoping in the next three to four years.
Three to four years.
And there again, I think some of that information will probably be available to you at the board retreat.
And we'll get that stuff before the board retreat, so we can...
The goal is to have it achieved by the first of July, so you've got a couple of weeks to look at it. Are there other questions from the board? Roll call.
Mrs. LaBonne?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wasner?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaver?
Aye.
Mrs. Wiger?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the breakfast and lunch prices for the 25, 26 school year as were presented in your packet.
So? Second.
So, over the last couple of months, I've been talking with you about menu pricing. Tonight's recommendation is that menu pricing for breakfast and lunch will remain the same as last, as this year, it'll be the same next year. We did work very closely with ISBE this year on the paid lunch equity calculator, which did not come out until last night. The only real, the only real negative that I do want to share, and this is actually a very complex topic that I worked, worked pretty diligently with them on, is the USDA and ISBE can require us to raise our lunch and breakfast prices. They can only require us to raise them by 10 cents. We can raise them higher if we want to. That happens when you are below the recommended USDA rate. That USDA rate is like $3.85. We are at $3.05. So, we have qualified for some exemptions, and we have been for the last few years qualifying, but it is very possible that those exemptions could go away in the future, and if they did, there would be a point in time where then we would be required on a yearly basis to go up by 10 cents until we get to that USDA threshold that they have out there. So, happy to answer any questions.
Where does the money go that, that students pay for lunches? Does that go to us or to Whitsen?
Well, so, Whitsen gives us a bill for the per-meal rate, whether it is a breakfast or a lunch, whether the child is paid, free, or reduced, as well as they give us a bill for Alcart. We then have basically two revenue streams. What parents pay, whether that's for an Alcart item, or whether that's for a full lunch or a full breakfast, and then we get a meal reimbursement per breakfast, per lunch, whether you are free, reduced, or paid from the state. So, those are the two revenue streams. We are one of, one of 33 public schools that is maintaining a positive cash flow on lunch, on food service, which is where our exemption comes from. And that's actually a very, very good thing. I don't want to make it sound like we're making all this money off of it, we're not. We're barely showing this positive cash flow, which is right where you want to be.
Enables us to?
Which enables us to hold our lunch prices where they are.
That's awesome.
That might not be the case next year, but that's where we are this year. So, that is our recommendation.
They wouldn't make those changes mid-year?
No.
If we?
No.
Any other questions from the board? Roll call.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaver?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBonne Park?
Aye.
Mrs. Wiger?
Aye.
Move on to administrative reports, business report, Mr. Campbell.
I'll be brief. You've heard a lot about color dives from the government recently. Whitsen's has announced that they're removing a series of color dives, just as a general FYI to all of you. I would also, I wanted to highlight county facility sales tax as we continue to eagerly watch. In January, so again, what we received this year, right now, was from January, four months ago, five months ago, and it was 38,000 more than the previous year, which, when you think about a timeframe after the holidays, that's a lot, because that's 1% of the sales. So, when we start thinking about, well, what was different from one January to the next, we start highlighting what stores have opened and what stores have not, or what stores were open this January versus those that were not. So, we are eagerly watching what that will continue to potentially bring in for our school district. And that's it. We'll leave it at that.
I feel like I missed something. Did, did we get a big store that I didn't remember?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Really big store.
Down, down, down on the, end of town there?
Right next to it?
Chipotle.
Yeah, right by Chipotle.
Not Chipotle, but right next to it, huh?
Oh, okay, there's all, there's all kinds of new stuff down there.
Yes, there is.
Take a trip?
You'll have to wander down there and...
Go check it out.
Don't take a trip. Bad choice of words.
Well...
Should be a good trip. Moving along.
Summer school update?
Yeah, in your board documents, you will see basically an outline of what we are doing, and we're going to summer school again this year. Just to give you an overview, it's, as always, it's 20 days. We're starting May 30th, and we go to June 27th. Our locations are at Madison and Reagan, and then, of course, the high school. It comes to about three hours of instruction every day for the, for the K-5 kids in math and ELA. The middle school will be math and ELA, and I think they'll have science and social studies too. The high school, they'll be doing basically credit recovery through Apex with some teachers working with them. They, the, the goal is to fill the knowledge gaps, but also, you know, at the end of the year here for K-5, and also for 6 through 12, we've identified kids that, well, K-5 that would not be able to move forward without, or move on to the next grade without this extra help, and it's identified in your document that 32 students told K-5, which is, which is not bad, would not be able to move forward without this, and, you know, part of our process that we've done over the last two years now is identify those potential kids in February, meet with those parents, with February parent-teacher conferences, and then continue to put in interventions with the hope of bringing those numbers down, and then measuring through STAR, Renaissance STAR assessment that we've had now for several years, and also with the grades that the kids earn, standards-based grading that they earned in their classrooms. So, our teachers look at that data, they break it down, they identify the students that need the extra help, and then invites are sent out, and overall, we have about 200 total kids, not all of those are mandatory. A lot of them are just kids that are on the lower end that need extra assistance, again, in skill gaps that they have or knowledge gaps, and we've offered and invited those kids to come in, and parents have said yes. So, for example, in the elementary, like I said, we have 32 that are mandatory, but we have 79 that are just coming because the parents agree with what the teachers have said, and they really could use the extra month of instruction. So, again, they look at the data, the invites about the families. There's a lot goes into summer school. Transportation forms are filled out, sent over here to the bus company. The bus company builds the routes, they send the information back to our secretaries. Our secretaries call all these families and say, this is when the pickup time is, this is when the drop-off time is. So, it's basically like running another school year, but in one month, and it's fast and furious, and we, we get through it. You can see the number of classrooms that we have there, K-5 as well, and that's, that's a quick overview of everything. The reminder note for, for summer school, families is actually going on tomorrow. Just yet another reminder, don't forget, we start on the 30th, deal with the times, and just getting everybody on the same page. So, and again, secretaries will be contacting families with the transportation information. So, as far as curriculum is concerned, we use the resources that we have. There is an extra one that we purchased, but it's connected to our Envision map, it's called Summer School Impact Envision, and it's directly identifies the toughest portions of each grade level, the, the standards, the toughest ones for kids to grasp, and they give extra time to work on those. So, it's a, it's, it's a very needed item, and we've been seeing the benefits year over year, and that, that's about it. You guys have any questions for me?
Doug, under, there's like over half of our, just over half of our whole summer school population, 111 of them are K through 5. Is that a huge shift from the previous years?
We're down now. I think last year, we had like 135.
154 last year.
In those grades?
154 last year. 29 in kindergarten, 3 in first, 25 in second, 13, or 16 in third, 24 in fourth, 28 in fifth. So, very, actually, it's probably less than last year.
You know, we had kind of a heavy-hitting year this year with some of our kiddos, I'm just wondering if we're down or up from that?
Doing pretty good, actually. Anyone else?
Thanks, Doug.
Scholarship winners, last week, we had the awards night at Dixon High School, which was an amazing event. Actually, onsite, there was $207,16 worth of scholarships given that night, which is pretty incredible from across our entire community. This does not even take into account specific scholarships that kids get directly from universities. So, I think it was an incredible night. You saw a nice cross-section of kids who were given money that, it, it was just incredible, the amounts that were given out, and the kids and the parents, I know, were incredibly appreciative. Each year, we have Illinois State Scholars, and we have 14 students from the senior class that were given Illinois State Scholars recognition, and that is based, if I remember correctly, on grade point average, and that, is that the only? Yes. Simply on their grade point average, we were reminiscing upstairs about this senior class, and they have been a very studious class, as well as being incredibly kind, and this is a larger list than we've seen some years. So, very proud of our Illinois State Scholars. And committee reports from the board.
I think some committees did not meet in May.
Correct.
At the para, or PRC meeting. Does not meet in May. But health insurance did. We just met the other day, and they give us kind of a state of healthcare and pharmacy, national trends, and of course, it's no surprise, everything's up. Medical trends are up. Prescription is up. There's a lot of good drugs out there, but they're very expensive, and the, our representative concluded that we have an uncertain future in terms of healthcare and costs. We know costs will be up. District-wide, we're, we did better this year than we did last year in terms of, of claims, but like Mark said, it's just, it's always going up, bigger part of our budget. And so, we also discussed our I-deductible health plan, and HSA, we spent quite a bit of time talking about what that looks like, what education is needed. All unions are at this meeting, and there were some questions regarding that option. So, we'll keep you filled in on that.
Community engagement met yesterday, and we're wrapping up, this is our last meeting of the year. So, we, we kind of accomplished two things this year. One is to update a page, a page on the website about attendance matters. We like, we like attendance matters because it matters to paying to attend, and attendance does matter. So, we've got a lot of information out there about, about attendance and why it is- and why it's important that kids are not missing school. We're still trying to talk about how we're in this absenteeism crisis where it's way more kids are absent than they were before COVID. The other part of our kind of campaign around that is some posters that we have developed. And we've, we've got a list of about 45 businesses around town that we're going to go in the first week of August and start passing these out in, in a variety of places. We'll just pass that around. They, they, they're all roughly the same here with the different sort of text at the bottom, facts about, about attendance.
Get the same poster.
It's not, it's different. It's got different, different words at the bottom.
Different pictures.
But yeah. Amy Scott was kind enough to do a ton of work on the graphical design, the printing of these, lamination. She, she's gone above and beyond for this, but. So, and then the whole committee is going to, we've split up the list to 45 businesses and we're all going to do that here in the first week of August. And then the last bit, the, the third of this, of the two things we've done is to work with Soft Valley Media on a, on advertising campaign, another way to get the message out to the community. Or we're going to target some social media ads that are for people who are using some kind of electronic device, whether it's a phone or a computer or whatever. If they're within the district boundaries, we're going to show ads about why attendance matters to them. We've got the Dixon Public Schools Foundation was kind enough to give us some money to make that happen. And we're going to do that. That'll be, that'll be sometime, starting later in the summer to kind of hit the beginning of the school year to hit them strong. And then the last bit on the posters is that we, we got these smaller ones that are going to go to businesses and we got giant posters we're going to print outside of every school with a, with another graphic designed by Amy Scott. We're trying to hit this in any way that we can. And just to, just to, principals are doing a lot in a lot of schools as well around attendance and this is just another, just one way that we're trying to move the needle.
I think they're very impressive and to see those all over town will, will really matter and show that it matters to us, Dixon Public Schools, you know?
Yep.
I like, I like it.
Yeah, it's been a great year. We've got a really good group of community engagement.
One thing I wanted to ask community engagement, did, did we know, did we ask them also for volunteers for the superintendent search focus group?
Not in that meeting, no.
Okay. Because it would seem like that makes common sense. We're looking for.
Good group too.
Yeah.
We, we have some people on the committee that have already volunteered without being asked specifically.
Right. Superintendent's report.
Well, believe it or not, on June 2nd, we will get the registration for the board conference in Chicago in November. And so we need to know, if you can, by show of hands, who believes they'll be able to go in to the board conference. So that when it pops up at 8:00 AM on June 2nd, here, they go right in to begin to secure rooms for everybody. So if you plan, plan to, to go?
It's the weekend before Thanksgiving.
Yep, everybody. Awesome. Awesome. So we'll keep you up to date as more comes. It's usually get everybody registered and then within a couple of months, maybe August, September, I think we get the confirmation of where you'll be. And, and then it does go in on Thursday night for board presidential stuff, so. And we are at that time of year, folks. Friday night is Reagan Middle School's promotion. It is going to be in Lancaster Gymnasium at Dixon High School. So we can make sure that they divide the names equally because we go up and while Mr. Magna Fishy and his team is announcing it, our board usually greets the students and shakes hands. How many plan to be at Friday night's promotion ceremony? And does anyone have children that they would like to see? Okay, so we will make sure that we try to get you in your kids' alphabetic, alphabetic area. So we'll check with you when, and make sure we have the right person. And then finally, Sunday.
Sorry, and that's six, what time, Matt told me. Was it six, 13? No, what time did?
We're going to be there at?
Oh.
We should meet in the athletic director's office at 6 o'clock because usually around 6:15, 6:20, we head to the stage. And then Sunday is the graduation of our seniors. It is going to be, with their permitting, out on AC Bowers Field beginning at 1:00. As you all know, that is a very unique parking situation. So we always recommend you get there as early as you can, but no later than 12:30 PM. We will meet in the athletic director's office again. And I think I saw everybody's hand go up for that. So again, does anyone have a child or someone that you would like that? You're a double D this one. So anyone else have a child? If there's someone special, we can also look at that so we can get that to Mr. Shannon. I'll tell them all seven of you will be there. I guess it's supposed to be a beautiful day, so we're, we're very hopeful for that. And look forward to seeing our eighth grade promotion students and our graduates. And finally, believe it or not, we only had one full year request since our last board meeting. Jeremy Heim from Dell Tech requested our contract documents and amendments for our 2013 bid for student transportation and we have complied with this request. If we are okay, we will approve the personnel report unless someone needs to go into executive session for it. Then we will go into executive session to have a little discussion with you. There will be two action items coming out of executive session this evening related to salary increases for next year. So is everybody okay doing part now and part after? Okay?
I'll read the personnel page first and then ask for a motion to approve in a second. New hires. Natalie Boone, special ed teacher at Jefferson School. These are all effective for the 25-26 school year unless otherwise stated. Angel Doyle, pre-K for all preschool teacher at Washington School. Ashley Henneger, assistant principal at RMS. Stephanie Jordan, social worker at Washington. Alexis Point, third grade teacher at Jefferson. Abby Rizner, choir teacher at Dixon High School. Molly Stitzel, fifth grade special ed resource teacher at Madison School. Kale Valdez, paraprofessional at DHS. Amy Wilcox, paraprofessional at DHS. A change in status. Kayla Agnew from paraprofessional at Washington to paraprofessional at RMS. Sydney Bitner from office attendant at RMS to building secretary at DHS, effective July 1st, 2025. Brenda Cuaco from paraprofessional at Washington to paraprofessional at Dempsey Therapeutic School. Resignations. Danielle DeWitt, special ed teacher at Washington School, effective at the end of the 24-25 school year. John Kingry, crossing guard at Jefferson School, also effective at the end of 2024-25 school year. Melissa Palacio, lunchroom attendant at Madison School, effective May 1st, 2025. Anna Rosenbaum, paraprofessional at Jefferson. The following are all effective at the end of the 24-25 school year. Katrina Shirley, music teacher at Jefferson School. Elizabeth Stamm, title-one teacher at Jefferson School. Retirements. Dorian Kingry, title-one teacher at Jefferson School. Dismissals. Esmeralda Rangel, custodian at DHS, effective May 21st, 2025. Melissa Stowell, paraprofessional at Dempsey Therapeutic Day School, effective May 21st, 2025. New facilitator, Maggie Curry, physical education facilitator at DHS. Facilitator resignation, Jennifer Keel, third grade facilitator. 20, 24-25 Dixon High School coaches and activities. Jesse Argus. JV softball, half-stipend. Rick Shorier, JV softball, half-stipend. Denise Ubers, accompanist. Richard Dingrado, accompanist. Zach Heinz, head summer strength. Brad Winterlin, assistant summer strength. Tyler Madison, assistant summer strength, half-stipend. 2024-25 coaching resignations. Eric Ferguson, RMS assistant scholastic bowl coach, effective May 21st, 2025. Candy Lind, RMS scholastic bowl coach, effective at the end of this school year. Roll call.
Motion first.
Oh, sorry. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates? Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Laubert?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity, student disciplinary cases.
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Laubert?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
Good to go. We are now back in open session. I need a motion that the board approve the raises for the non-certified, non-union staff and administration for the 25-26 school year as presented and discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Laubert?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
We need a motion that the board approve the sub-teacher rates for the 25-26 school year as presented and discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Mrs. Laubert?
One fifth. No, good.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Aye.
Mr. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gates?
Aye.
Mrs. Wagner?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All is in favor?
You're getting much more talkative.
I did, it just was, it was just, I wanted to tell you that it wasn't anything to be on the record.